I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting scheduled for October 28, 2021. If you would, please rise and take your seats at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the role with excuse's absence of Mr. Bailey and Mr. Spiz?
Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Ah, Berger?
Yes.
Conway?
Here.
There is a forum.
Thank you. Move to item four, which is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda of a regular meeting on October 28, 2021.
I'll second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October 14, 2021.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item six, public comment for items not scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda. Is there anyone out in the public commission to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. Move to item seven, commissioners' comments. Mr. Noel?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Berger?
My only comment tonight is I want to really again express my thanks to Mr. Young for the time and effort that he spent with this fine group of people that do what he's done over the years with the planning commission.
Question.
It's more than what people think sometimes when you're trying to be the chair, to run the meeting, properly put everything in perspective and in the right direction. So, thank you, Michael.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Michael. You are welcome. And it's been a pleasure to serve with you guys. That's my comment for the evening. Mr. Humwick?
I was just going to wish you well and you future endeavors, and the community will wish you.
Thank you, sir.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we can move to item nine, new business. Topic A, discussion regarding amendment to schedule of regulations for C2 zoning district to include climate-controlled self-storage. I'm going to move to Zach to introduce.
All right.
Zach being the planner for the township. Who, by the way, is doing the picture?
Good afternoon.
Good evening. So this, tonight, is for you to determine whether or not you want to recommend the township board pursue looking at this further. So, property owner Josay submitted a request to staff requesting that the township look at allowing mini-storage in commercial zoning districts. There are a couple of different ways zoning tax amendments can take place. It's usually the township initiates them, but a fellow can walk in off the street with proposed texts and drop it on the table. That, my little jokey thing, is that happens more often in Lansing than at local levels. So, right now, mini-warehouses are defined as a building or group of buildings, each of which contains several individual storage units, each with a separate door unlocked and which can be leased on an individual basis. They are permitted uses in the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts. They are not permitted in other zoning districts at this time. And Mr. Say has, as part of his materials, pointed out that indoor storage tends to have different characteristics of the typical outdoor mini-storage long buildings. For planning considerations, I've listed a couple of items there. One is if there is an interest in going forward, we're probably going to want to create out different type of storage because this type of use in a commercial area can have some negative impacts on the aesthetics if not managed well. It can also affect the commercial use of the adjacent properties by lowering foot traffic and through traffic. And though not exactly a planning issue, it could affect the tax base. So, a stark example that we talked about often at ordinance review committee is if you allow uses in industrial district that don't pay property taxes, that could be a burden on the community. But for tonight, the question is whether or not to forward to the township board if they should approve money for the ordinance review committee and the planning commission to look at this further.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you will, for a discussion.
I was going to open up for a discussion. Yes, sir.
Zach, when you first described the definition, now, a controlled element for an atmospheric condition within a storage facility would be totally inside, right? All the storage would be inside?
Yes.
But that's not specifically what this would do in a C2 district for storage, right? It would still be storage that you could enter from the outside even though it would be an individual door?
That depends on how you write it. So, there could be climate-controlled storage that has still individual doors on the outside of the building, but there are also examples that were included in this packet where there's one door or one main door and you access your unit from inside as opposed to outside. So, that's something that if this is investigated further, should be addressed.
Well, then maybe I need to ask a different question. What kind of a facility then was Mr. Say? Is that how you say his last name? I think that's how you say it. What was he specifically asking for?
A little bit of both was my takeaway, with some exterior doors directly to units and some with internal access.
Right. So, I mean, honestly, my opinion in a C2 district, you know, C, will you do one other thing for us tonight?
Okay. I'll try.
Will you, well, will you typically explain what a C2 district would have in it for uses?
Yep. I will stall a little bit and get my, my book.
Because that's important right now, I think, for, for definition of what we're trying to do with this district.
So, I'll ask the chief a question in a minute. The internal versus external storage? Any impact?
It would be.
It would have to be fully sprinkled.
Exactly. Question that I have for everybody, the building that sits on the corner of 24 down in Ormond Township.
North Point.
North Point, right there.
Yeah, that's a fully interior.
Fully interior.
Storage facility. You have to go in the building.
Correct.
And then from within the building, you go to your units.
Then you go all the way around to get all the individual units. And I think Brandon just pulled it up at the corner of Similac and the Statue of Liberty.
It has a freight elevator, so you can go to a different level above and below.
Correct.
And then you have product that's two stories in element. And it's a fully suppressed building.
Yes. From the fire side, it would have to be suppressed, so obviously it had to have water room to it and everything.
Mr. Chair? Noel?
Zach, would you explain for us as well as the public, what is a climate-controlled facility?
Yep. I will start with the first question, though. The C2 general commercial is your main commercial district. Most of Lapeer, M24 is in the C2, Meyer, all the commercial, pretty much all the commercial south of town. And so, the intent, here's what your zoning ordinance says. "The general commercial districts are intended to provide sites for more intensive and more diversified business types that would typically serve community and regional trade areas and might have a negative impact on adjoining residential areas because of intensity or outdoor activities." And right now, permitted uses in C2 districts are all of those in the C1, which retail up to 10,000, retail up to 70,000, restaurants with outdoor, and outdoor patios, daycare centers, health and fitness clubs, hero homes, indoor theaters, colleges, commercial indoor recreation, and for special uses, bulk propane sales, outdoor recreation, retail uses more than 70,000 square feet, automobile establishments including repair, wash, and sales, assembly or dance hall, bar or lounge, commercial kennel, hotel or motel, equipment and/or vehicle rental, drive-through businesses, open-air businesses, outdoor sale of products, veterinary clinic, transient temporary amusements, domestic radio facilities, wireless communication facilities, and accessory buildings. Does everyone have an idea what's?
I want to thank you for that.
What C2 is?
I do have an answer. I do have an understanding. I just wanted to make sure everyone else did. Now, John has a question, too, that he wants answered, and I have another one after him.
Yep. So, and we have someone at the front table who's got more experience with storage than I do, so maybe she could add some more to the climate-controlled self-storage. So, as noted in here, it is a relatively newer development for self-storage. Try to find the best description. The, the main element is that it's in a larger building, generally with interior access, but not necessarily solely with interior access, that's climate-controlled, so the temperature and the humidity, depending on how fancy the Phil Silly is, doesn't change. They can be one-story, multiple-story. When they are in commercial areas, they typically are reuse of a vacant big-box store, like when Walmart's here, and then they build across the street. It'll go up to the other one. And there are some examples of various versions in his letter on page 28 of the packet that went out.
But each rental unit's not individually temperature controlled?
Correct. That's my understanding, that that's not typical, yes.
So, they keep the building at 67 or whatever, and that's that?
Yep.
Does that cover it, Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Zach, do you, do you feel that we have an overabundance of C2 districts available in the township currently?
Let me go to the map. There, so here's, here's your zoning map. The dark red is your C2. And as I'm looking at it, most of it is developed already.
Right.
So, there aren't large areas. The property that Mr. Say owns is on the south.
West.
And I hate to use specific examples when we're looking at text amendments because it affects not just here but everywhere. His property is on the southwest corner of Drainer in Lapeer. That is one of the few undeveloped C2 properties in the township right now. Let me take a peek.
So, so basically, in your opinion, there is not an overabundance of C2 available?
No.
So, changing this, or allowing this change, would then decrease another C2 area for, for use of what we typically have it permitted for?
Potentially.
Well, potentially, anywhere down the road. That was like when we had our office professional-type uses. If we started changing all those, we were starting to run short on that. So, you get a nice facility that someone wants to come in and develop, and then all of a sudden you don't have property availability for it. You're, you're letting those people go. They pass you by. So, in, in my opinion, and from what I looked at and tried to discover, and that's why I'm asking the questions I'm asking, just so everybody has the same knowledge, I'm not really favorable of trying to rezone this. So, I don't know that I would support moving this forward to take it in that direction. But then I, only one person on the planning commission right now.
There is one other large C2 area that I just picked up as I'm looking here. It's on Market, well, Market in Lapeer behind.
Yes, the south side.
Yep.
Yeah, it's on the south side. It's where the bank owned the piece and where we already had, we tried to bring coals in there at one time to the township. But that didn't happen. That kind of went away, too. There were a lot of people against it in the beginning. So, that was directly next to a residential. Is this C2 directly against residential?
His is, yes.
I would have to think so.
That's the one, Drainer and 24 on the southwest corner.
Sure. The whole backside is right against residential.
Behind the gas station.
Yep.
I was going to say, does it, does, does he own the gas station?
No.
No?
He does.
Is he taking it out?
No.
He doesn't own all the businesses in the gas station.
Correct.
They're, they're independent from what he has.
So, where do you have the C2 that puts up against residential?
Yep. Here, I will do a quick tour.
We have more than one.
Is that a real good transition?
No, I know.
So, that's, that's his property.
It's our depicted.
The big one there. Okay. That's the existing.
Yep.
Big one there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, that's all got there.
Correct. Exactly.
Yep, yep.
And so, there, again, to reframe the question tonight is whether or not recommend the township board to invest money in looking at potential amendments. If there is an interest in going forward after that point, there are all sorts of ways it could be sliced or diced, limiting the size of the facility, requiring certain setbacks from residential areas, requiring certain size of properties. There are various techniques for trying to minimize any potential negative impacts in the community.
Can he do what he wants to do, or potentially what he wants to do, under a PUD?
No, it's not a permitted use under the current zoning.
Okay. Zach?
Yes?
What kind of storage can he put in there today?
Storage would have to be accessory to a permitted use. So, if he had a business and you were doing storage to support it, like the stockroom, basically.
No, can he put outdoor storage there?
No.
No.
So, he can't, he can't put a building out there, any type of storage at all?
No.
Correct.
So, is he asking, so is he asking for outdoor storage and the climate control?
Not at this time. My understanding is he's just interested in the indoor climate-controlled storage.
Well, wait a minute. Isn't he interested in changing the zoning?
He's interested in changing the zoning ordinance to allow for the use.
So, if zoning is changed.
Nope. He wants the use to be included in the zone.
Just the use?
Yeah, just the climate-controlled storage.
So, I gotta ask something stupid for a minute. Maybe I might brain dead. Then, he could not come in with a PUD to put this use on the property?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. I'm on track. I just wanted to make sure.
But if, if the zoning is changed, he can do all types of storage there, whether it's indoor, non-climate-controlled, outdoor, fenced in, change, you know, how to do it.
Depending on the shape of whatever would be adopted. So, you could, for example, have language that says you can only do commercial climate-controlled storage.
It's not reserved, right? This letter is only asking us to change it for a building with climate control, keep a building to store things. Let me, let me, let me take the individual out of it. Where can we have controlled or temperature-controlled storage in the township?
I-1 and I-2?
Yep. Right now, it would fall under the mini or self-storage and would be permitted in the industrial districts.
Okay. Isn't the simple fix is just make it special use in that zoning district?
That's one potential approach. And it's probably more.
That way, we would have the right to control whether or not we allow it or not allow it.
And you can put more conditions on it than if it's a permitted use.
Like a PUD.
Four of the choices, to say no, you're, it belongs in I-1 and I-2, and that's what.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Leave it.
Right. We can just leave it.
Correct. More thoughts or discussion?
I have none at this point.
What are we, what are we supposed to vote on within the hour to pursue it?
Whether you think the.
ORC?
PUD should look into it more, but to do that, we need to go to the township board and get it on the plan and get funding for it for you guys to look into it. So, there isn't any more discussion. I will look for a motion to either do it or a motion to drop it. Need a motion?
I don't think we need to. This is, this, this isn't discussion for it.
I mean, it's discussing, so you can just tell me what you.
You can make a motion.
What people feel they want to do.
Well, I personally believe, I'd like to keep the C2 district the way it is and the permitted uses as they're written currently.
I suppose we could discuss that in ORC.
Well, you're going to spend money. You're going to, and you're going to, you're going to spend additional funds and time and effort to go forward with it. I'm not, I'm not promoting to go forward with it, so that's my opinion. I said, I'll give you my opinion, but there's other members on the planning commission, so I'm not ready to move this forward and ask for monies to, to make it go forward.
I agree.
My feeling is it's more an industrial use than it is, I know it's a commercial use, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think the use of land, it lends itself to where it should stay.
Mr. Noel?
I agree. I agree that we don't need more forward.
So, you would only need a motion if you're going to ask the township board?
Correct.
For funding. If you're not going to, then.
I think I've heard it, you know, four, four, or five votes. Say name.
So, our discussion's over.
That's right.
Okay.
End of discussion.
End of discussion.
Top died for lack of motion. New business, item 9B, resignation of chairperson Michael Young. Yep, I did resign. I am moving to South Carolina with my family. I resigned as of November 1st. Now, my term, I had a three-year term that began in 2018, which means my term is over December of 2021. We all know that in this month, Thanksgiving, we have one meeting in November, and December's the same way to do it at Christmas. So, there's two more meetings to go for that term. So, I think the, the smart thing to do is when I resigned, Mr. Berger, who is now the vice-chair, he'll take my responsibilities. And what we need to do for the remaining two meetings of the year is nominate someone from our seven-member board, or six-member at this one, to be the vice-chair for the remaining two meetings. Then, in January of 2022, you all have a seven-member board again, and you will elect officers at that time. So, what I'd like to do is take nominations from you all here tonight for someone to take the vice president, or vice-chair position for the next two meetings for the remainder of 2021.
They don't have to be present to nominate.
They do not have to be present. I have contacted, I've got contact with both absentees, and both of them will do it. So, I just need nominations.
Mr. Chair? First, you need to have a motion to accept your resignation, according to your bylaws.
It's not all about me, but I guess so.
I'll make a, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of chairperson Michael Young, effective November 1st, 2021.
I'll regrettably second that. It's been moved and supported.
What if he don't accept it?
Discussion on the motion?
Well, I'm leaving anyway.
Sorry. November 23rd, I will be gone.
Work remotely.
I appreciate that. Any other discussion or motion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That motion forward. I resign. Now, I will look for motions or nominations for vice-chair for the remaining term 2021.
Well, there's a county commissioner that's not here right now.
Correct. And I.
I'd like to make a motion to place Michael Spiz as vice-chair of the planning commission until December 31 of 2021.
A second. It's been moved and supported, or moved and supported. Mr. Spiz did agree to me to take any, any, I think so.
Per conversation with her.
Any other discussion or motion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Mr. Spiz will be the vice-chairman until December 31, 2021. Thank you all. Moving on to item 10, unfinished business. A, schedule of uses and associated zoning tax amendments. Our planner Zach, if you would, take the podium to reintroduce what we're doing here. All right.
Good evening again. So, we have made revisions based on the previous planning commission meeting. We have made revisions based on ordinance review committee meetings since then and based on attorney guidance. As you look through both the table and the text, I've tried my best to make sure any changes from the last version you saw has great background. There are a couple of spots where I missed it, but I can touch on that when we go through there. We do have a public hearing scheduled for next Thursday on November 4th. So, this is basically to polish things up for the document that goes before you for that meeting.
Two Thursday.
Oh, what's that?
No, it's next Thursday.
No, it's next Thursday.
Is the 11th is Veterans Day, and then the following, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, it's the fourth.
Yep. So, I will start at the top on residential uses. And the big change in the text is related to the state-licensed residential facilities and the various foster homes. The definition for state-licensed residential facility is taken from the Zoning Enabling Act. That was a recommendation from the township attorney. Oh, by the way, when you see parentheses, that's something that the state act left, left out. So, it references the Michigan Implied Law for both the Adult Foster Care Licensing Act and the Child Care Licensing Act, but it only in text references the adults. So, we wanted to put that in there so folks knew that it was for both. The definitions for the foster care uses are all from the state act, and even with quotations around it. There were some variations from what's in the zoning ordinance currently, and the thought was that we should just take it from the state since that's how they've defined it. And no other changes in the residential definitions. So, if you look to the table, the changes there are that H and I, the child or adult foster care family home and child foster family group home, have been stricken from the table. However, they are covered under the definition of current J, state-licensed residential facility, so they're still in there, just in a different term, which we're saying using the same term the zoning enabling act uses. Then, G, the adult foster care small or large group home serving seven or more residents. The seven or more residents has been added because if they're serving only six, then it's a state-licensed residential facility. So, there's a weird thing where the state act, they don't play well together. And so, one says, if you're licensed for this, this is what you are. And another one says, but if you only have this many people, this is what you are. So, that's why there's that subtle variation in there. Any questions on the residential uses? Is there currently drafted? All right. Hearing none, I will go on to agricultural uses. And here, just added a couple of refinements to the text for farm market roadside stand. Farm market roadside stands on a farm shall not be considered commercial use. And we added an actual number in, which is kind of exciting, and we know where it's going to land in the zoning ordinance. Clarified that outdoor display areas where farm products are grown, such as pumpkin patches, don't need to meet the setbacks. And those are the only changes for the agricultural uses. Oh, I should say, current, this version, we've cut out the subject to whatever section. That's because it's covered on the right column of the table. And so, it'll free up space in there so that we can fit this on a regular sheet of paper. And so it'll free up space in there so that we can fit this on a, a regular sheet of paper. All right, hearing nothing else, uh, to food service uses. There were no changes to the text from the previous version that this body saw. The one change in the use table is the addition of bar or lounge as a special land use in the C1 district. Uh, ordinance review committee spoke about this for a while, and it was brought up that if we allow small distillery, microbrewery, or brew pubs as a special use in C1, a bar or lounge ought to also follow that. And we've got the three ORC folks here, so they can provide more information on that. Um, any questions on food service uses? Did the ORC folks wanna talk to that a bit?
I thi, I think that, well, we went length on it for a while, because we were trying to make sure we knew what those definitions of each component were. So, and it was Mr. Spiz that brought up a couple of comments of a few meetings back too, that brought us back into discussion with it again, when he started talking about lounge versus bar and versus, you know, brew pub and all the rest. So, I think we did a, a very good job in how we distinct, distinguished, uh, between each one, and said, look, if this has the similarity, then we should allow it to happen. So that's what we did. So we kind of agreed with each other, and kind of agreed with previous comment from, uh, planning commission members. So that's how the change came about.
And I can add the definitions that are being added, the small distillery, microbrewery, and brew pub. If you recall last time, the attorney expressed concerns about not also referencing that you may need a township license. Um, they're comfortable with the language now, is my understanding. Because, well, a couple of reasons, and I don't wanna speak to them, but in general, um, some of these facilities may not require a local approval if you're manufacturing it. If you're just making it, uh, that's different than serving it or selling it. Um, and because there are other alcoholic uses in the zoning ordinance, like bar or lounge, well, we don't also have that qualifier that, in the definition, you need to get state and local approvals. And so for, for parallel purposes, um, they're comfortable with it as it's written now. All right, uh, to the bottom of the scheduled uses page now here. Um, we added the descriptors for the use, and these will actually go at the top of the table when you see it all stuck together. P identifies uses that are permitted, S identifies special land uses, and a dash identifies uses that are not permitted. And with the definition that it's, if we don't list the use, it's also not permitted. And then we have the footer to say, things in this column, here are specific standards that you need to meet, in addition to all the general standards for landscaping or parking or those type of things. Does that make sense? Any questions, suggestions? All right, page two, um, here. For arts, entertainment, and recreation uses, a minor change in the text for the banquet hall, and that's just to make the text consistent with how the use is described in the table. So basically, just changing it from community building or lodge hall to banquet hall, club, lodge hall, rental hall, or catering hall, which is how it's listed in the table here. And, do, do, do. The "and similar uses" has been removed from A banquet halls, because that's already covered in another section of the zoning ordinance that says if it's similar to this use, here's how you determine and establish that it's similar, so it's already there. Under M, recreational facility for residents of a development has been added as a permitted use in the recreation district. That's because the future land use map calls for all of the little recreation areas as a part of site plans or subdivisions to be recreation. And so what they're using it for is that zoning district, so that was added as a permitted use. Any questions on art, entertainment, or recreation uses? Oh, and, uh, the other big thing, sorry, I missed this, it's, it's
Can't see it?
Is there is a definition for transient temporary amusements?
I was gonna bring that one up.
Which is a temporary use such as a circus carnival or similar temporary gatherings of people.
We spent quite a bit of time with that, so, and people probably don't know that we did it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or temporary, that even seems to be following that.
Well, there could be a number of categories, right? But, uh, the idea is that it's not there permanently, it's transient. So, you know, they can come in for a weekend, and, and three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and be gone.
Yep.
And, uh, and we, we didn't have anything really covering it in the past, well, so we put it in under all, all those districts, and there we allowed all the special land use.
All right, next to institutional uses. And there were no changes to the table, except for removing the subject twos. Uh, there was a change for the definition of a place of worship. Uh, this is on page nine of the little fellow there. Uh, we've added operated by an organized religious body qualified under section 501(c)(3) of Internal Revenue Code of 1986, title 26 of the United States Code. So that is borrowed from Michigan compiled law, that reference of what defines religious bodies. The township attorneys did express a bit concern about that, but verbs matter, and in this case, they were a bit more comfortable when I pointed out qualified doesn't have to mean recognized. So it doesn't mean you have to have your 501(c)(3) papers, just that you could get them if you wanted to. Um, we may or may not be hearing more from them, but I know last time there's concern about being legitimate religious body.
But we were adamant about putting that 501(c)(3) in there.
Yep.
Because under the law of Michigan, that was what creates that difference of definition.
Yes.
So really, what we did was just included the law. And says that, yeah.
Does the attorney determine the qualification?
Well, I think the township board could do it. With the right papers.
Yeah, so if there's, if there's a question, the first thing I would ask for is, are you 501(c)(3)?
Sure.
And, and show
Provided that.
Well, you just had to, well, qualified to be one.
Yeah, so the first one would be if they're recognized. Next, uh, I, if someone came in, I would work with the attorney to pull up title 26 of the United States Code and see the, what the qualifiers are. And then go through a process of, do you meet this one? Do you meet this one? Do you meet that one? Um, so there would be a process, we wouldn't just be shooting from the hips.
Well, Zach, it doesn't mean that, I guess I'll say it also. There's businesses sometimes that say they're, uh, qualified to be a nonprofit organization, but that's not always true. So, the qualifier is one thing, but then to actually have the data in the back of paperwork as a 501(c)(3) is what's important. So that's why we put the 501(c)(3) in there to qualify it, to say that's what we have to have.
Right.
Because there's, there's a, there was a place in Oregon that wasn't paying any tax on the property at all, and then they found out they weren't qualified to be a 501(c)(3), and that was removed, and all of a sudden, they started paying the property tax into place when I'm a business. But I'm not gonna go any further.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about not being the 501, but the fact that, if somebody, organization said they were qualified to be one, but they chose not to be one.
This, what's the benefit?
Well, that's what I'm asking him. He said, if the verbiage
Yeah, so
Change from recognizing qualified.
My mom ran a daycare when I was a little kid, which was fantastic, because you had a bunch of toys in the house, but it was awful, because you had a bunch of kids in your house. But there are tremendous tax savings from actually having that 501(c)(3).
Sure, that's the whole idea.
That I can't imagine organizations that would qualify not getting it.
So why would the attorney have a problem with that verbiage then?
Maybe we'll find out when we get the review letter for next week.
Okay.
I don't know. All churches have to be then? All churches, don't they have to be?
Well, if they want the tax break, let's just say it that way. If they want the tax break, they have to be.
Well, perhaps a concern from the attorney would be there's the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, that basically says you can't place an undue burden on the practice of religion or housing of institutionalized persons. So the concern likely was the township, you know, with, with a very strict reading, if religious body recognized under this, would mean that they would have to go through that process to practice religion as a place of worship. And so if, if that's the, the view they originally had when reading it, I can understand that, because you're requiring an extra step. All right.
I think probably too in that category though, Zach, it was important to let people know how we, uh, made those changes with the municipal wastewater treatment facilities, and also the, uh, you know, those components down through there, where we put them all in the right place. You know, that, that were, we kind of worked on that diligently too, based on a couple of things that the township's currently in, the situation they're currently in.
And I missed those in the gray.
Well, that's okay, because we did spend quite a bit of time on it, just so we point out to, to the commissioner.
So, Mr. Berger's pointed out there have been some additional places where municipal water treatment facilities H and I municipal wastewater treatment facilities can go. The water has been placed as permitted in basically all the ag, single suburban farm and residential districts. Uh, we have those facilities now, including down the road here is in an R1A district currently. And the treatment facilities have been added as special land use in the ag and suburban farms, in addition to the industrial districts.
And also on, on the fact of what we did with the polling places, they're, they're allowed in every district.
Yep.
We just made it right straight across the board. You know, because we need, we need those places for voting purposes.
And while we're on institutional uses, uh, as you recall, we, this body forwarded to the township board the zoning map amendment, and one of the things that's likely gonna happen with that is the creation of a public slash institutional district. Um, and so most of these institutional uses would be permitted uses in that district. That's, that's a little bit for future, just getting you excited with the preview. All right, on to business, commercial, and retail uses. No changes in the text. A couple of changes to the scheduled use table is just the change in G for the automobile wash or car wash is for consistency with the defined term. Uh, same thing for the automobile repair facility, and for the automobile or recreational vehicle dealership, just so that they match the definitions that are in here for consistency. And then the retail uses, as discussed last time, we changed it from 70,000 to 65,000 square feet for consistency with the master plan. Any questions on those? All right, next up is industrial and manufacturing uses. The big change that we did this, with this version, is we now have definitions for heavy industrial and light industrial. And I think I, I may have fixed it, we'll see. So heavy industrial is defined as the manufacture, assembly, compounding, processing, packaging, or repair of materials or products primarily from extracted or raw materials, the storage, production, or processing of flammable or explosive materials, the manufacture of heavy equipment or vehicles, or the storage or manufacturing processes that involve potentially hazardous conditions. Examples include, but are not limited to, manufacturing, fabrication, or assembly of motor vehicle equipment, farm machinery or equipment, or heavy industrial machinery, or equipment, large-scale production or packaging of food and beverages, beverage products for human or animal consumption, processing of wood, concrete, concrete masonry units or brick, manufacture of major appliances, pressing, stamping, or forming major sheet metal parts, or manufacture of iron, aluminum, bronze, or other castings. I should have brought something to drink down here. Light industrial is defined as the manufacture, assembly, compounding, processing, or packaging, or repair of materials or products primarily from previously prepared materials or parts. Examples include, but are not limited to textile goods, apparel, leather goods, sporting goods, light sheet metal products such as heating or ventilation equipment, siding, or eve troughs, signs, furniture or fixtures, glass products, converted paper or paper products, printing or publishing, jewelry, silverware or plated ware, office or art supplies or materials, or professional or scientific instruments, photographic or optical equipment or supplies. And as discussed in the scheduled use tables, instead of all the language, it's just been placed as heavy industrial is permitted in I-2, and light industrial as permitted in I-1 and I-2.
So no Ford motor plant in, uh, I-2?
Um, only in I-2, not in I-1.
Right. Okay, ready, I did that.
Yep.
Well, I like the distinction.
And I'll give credit to Mr. Hunwick. He pointed out an earlier version of the set initiation that laid more heavily on, um, raw parts, meant that if Ford had an assembly plant where they brought in all the parts, that would be considered light industrial, which doesn't feel like light industrial, so we made a little tweak. Um, and no other changes to industrial or manufacturing. Uh, in the use table, just a minor change in the temporary concrete batch plant for, for language consistency. All right.
You know, we did make another change in there that probably due to the fact we have marijuana cultivation.
Yep.
Those are now permit, where we have those in a permitted use, under special land use in the I-1 and I-2.
Yep.
That was never there before.
That's
That's new, by the way.
Yep, that was effective earlier this year.
Right. But a lot of people don't know about it yet.
Well, we're getting plenty of calls about it though.
Yeah, I know.
All right, other uses. Uh, the big change there is we've added definition for private heliport, and modified the definition for airport to private airport. These are largely parallel, uh, the Michigan Aeronautics Code, but they don't quote it directly, because the Michigan Aeronautics Code doesn't define private heliports or private airports. And the tweak, that this was a recommendation from the township attorney on the use table, is to delete private aircraft landing strips, and just include that under the private airport or heliport. Which makes sense. The main difference between the landing strip and the airport as far as use is landing strip is you're just landing and taking off. You're not parking it overnight, you're not messing with the engine, you're not fueling it, it's just touch and go. All right, any other?
And this, and just so the planning commission knows, we talked about landing strips being on land and landing strips being on water. So this, we, we kind of talked about each category and how they would be utilized. And that's kind of the simplicity of what we came up with and what we did with wording on this. So we think we have it covered fairly well for any uses that may occur within the township. We all know, because, well, we do have a couple of places we do know about for sure. So that's kind of what brought us to that, uh, definition.
Yeah, one thing that may need attention in the future, although we don't know it just yet, is, um, the heliport, if the, the hospital wants to include helicopter operations, we may need to look at that a little bit differently, because that wouldn't be considered private heliport, but it could also be considered accessory to the hospital itself. So that's something, and they don't have plans for that, but I just wanted to put folks on alert. All right.
All right.
And we are done with the scheduled abuse table. I do have a minor form question for folks. There are a couple of different ways to approach how the items are listed in the table. One is strictly alphabetical, where you start with the As and you end with the Z's. The other is to put things that you think happen, uh, are more likely to happen and occur at the top, and the more rare things at the bottom. Right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge, and so I'm curious if, if there's preference for either approach in this body.
Probably both.
I agree.
All right.
Makes it simpler.
So one thing that you likely will see next time is some of the, they'll be in different orders, and some of them may have a comma in front of them, just so similar uses can be examples. So for example, recreation, comma, outdoor, and recreation, comma, indoor, just so that if you're looking at recreation, you can see them both at the same spot. All right, next up is temporary storage. A couple of minor changes for this one from what we had last time on page 13. For location, the five-foot setback, we've added that they need to be set back from public sidewalks or safety paths. Usually they already would with the lot lines, but there may be cases where the sidewalk or safety path wanders into a property with or without an easement. And then on page 14, for membrane storage structures, so kind of the fabric carports, the appearance, membranes, storage structures shall be kept and maintained in a good condition free of damage to the membrane or support structure. So that's intended to prevent it from becoming ratty and rusty and unseemly. Any questions, comments on those?
No, I don't think we added anything either, did we, did we? So what we see is going before the public going to court?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Now I'm going to, since we're done with that, I want to make most of this meeting here. There's one other thing that I want you to start thinking about as far as zoning amendments. Right now, if you open up your zoning ordinance, the only way to know that it's been changed is it says with amendments through September 2020, or whatever, on the cover page. For use, that's generally acceptable, most folks just want to go in and see what's happening now. But for administrative and record-keeping purposes, it's good to know when sections changed. So when the Schedule of Use table changed, or when marijuana cultivation buildings were put in, primarily for determining whether or not a use was legal at a specific point in time. There are a couple of different ways communities will document this. One is after the cover sheet, they can put a table that says, this was the amendment, here's the date it was adopted, here's the date it was effective, and here are the sections that we touched. The other approach is you can put it at the back, is basically an appendix with the similar information saying what sections you touched, when you did it, and those types of details. A third way, this is more common with state statutes, is to within the text say this section was amended on this date.
I like it within the text because whenever I'm looking for something, then I know when that change was made. That's my opinion, but.
Do we have to know what the previous amendment stated, or is it just going to state it was amended?
Just that it was amended?
Know that it was amended and the date that it was amended and the way it became effective.
But do we need to know what it stated prior to the change?
No.
No, what it does is if you're researching it, is it tells you, I have to go look and find the previous version or the version before that date.
Yeah, which you can do, but you need to know that it was changed because sometimes people are from out of town and they're looking at a version, and all of a sudden, they didn't know that it changed, they don't have the right version of what the amendment was. So then all of a sudden, I just think it's good within the text myself, that's just, it's just easy place to find it for what they're looking for for that specific thing.
I like it in the text too. Three?
Well, that's just food for thought is what he's trying to say.
Yep, in text.
All right, thank you much. Thank you for your hard work on all this.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, let's move to item 11, Communication Committee Reports. For A, the Economic Development Committee, I'm going to ask one thing. Mr. Stiz, he's on that committee.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask this actually from my predecessor. I just want you guys to try to get forth with them gateway signs to Oxford. Who am I from? The Metamorah border in Lake Erie. I think it's high time Oxford raises its hand and shows itself a little pride. And that was going to be my project that actually stemmed, uh, developed before me. I told them I would get it started and finished, but, oh, it's out in the way and I can't finish it, so I'm going to ask you guys, please, try to finish that in '22 or '23. I appreciate that.
And send pictures.
Yeah. Let's go to item B, Ordinance Review Committee, anything new or different?
I don't know what to really add because we, you know, we get undated with like various requests from different parties, or different people, or whoever you want to say it from. And we're trying to be proactive in getting this component done, which we worked very diligently on for several, several weeks, months, I guess, we could probably say. And then each time somebody comes up with a pet peeve thing, we try to work on that too. Now Pete had one that came up recently that was a good one, Chief Schultz, and he, he's talking about the width of long driveways that go back to residential structures or any type of structure actually, because sometimes they're not maintained in a way to get really back there good. And it's like I told him, there's sometimes I can barely get my truck down some of them. So we're going to look into that in the future. We have some other ordinance criteria that we're going to look into the future. We're slowly, we're slowly getting some changes made that are beneficial for the community. It's taken us a while, but we're on the right road, so. I'm not telling you we're done, but actually we could meet frequently and probably not get it all done.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah.
I know the list. That driveway thing's a good idea.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Yeah, very good. Okay, Planner and Engineer Reports. I will go with Mr. Sharp first, let's see if he's been so patient. Sharp, engineer.
First off, Mike, I wish you well in your new endeavors, you know, I have had the pleasure of working with you as the chairman of this committee here. The property, that's on Drano Road, gosh, I forget the name of it, Zach.
930 Sanctuary Hills.
Sanctuary Hills. They have come in with a, with their site plan, you guys resoned that property a few months ago, so they're coming in with their site plan. That will be, I believe, at the December meeting. I believe it's going to be in time for the November. They're coming in with a cluster option, so just be prepared for that one there. And really that's about it as far as the planning aspects go. We've probably got a portion of the pathway paved up here on Dunlap Road from West Bay Shore, still got one more layer of asphalt. And they just today paved the, put the bike path, safety path in over on North Oxford Road that's been out for a couple of months over there by the high school, so they just got that paved in today.
Well, they were still working on it this afternoon, I don't know if it's done yet, but did they get it all done?
There were lights on when I drove by.
I was going to say, my inspector, I talked to him, I said, I'll be at the office till around seven just before, and stop back in, let me know how it went, and I hadn't heard from him yet.
Well, I think they were still working, right, Mike?
I think so.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, but I think they're going to get it done. They were about 75% of the way done with it when I talked to him around six o'clock, so hopefully.
Does it got to go all the way down the hill?
Uh huh, yeah, it comes all the way down the hill right now.
Well, they were at the top of the hill when I saw it. Going down.
Yeah, they were at the top going down, and then they worked their way back up. Then the second layer of asphalt, they started at the bottom and they worked their way back up. My understanding is supposed to be done.
Yeah.
That's all that I have, unless there's any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Zach, anything more from caller for the planner?
Well, he took my 930 drainer announcement, so I will just share that. Two nights ago, the Michigan House of Representatives at 2:00 AM in the morning passed HB4722, and nothing usually good happens after midnight. HB4722 would prohibit local units of government from prohibiting short-term rentals. It would allow them as a residential use of the property in up to four-unit dwellings. So units with four places, but all be short-term rental. It does have some provisions that would allow local government to continue to have sound and noise and traffic limitations. I will say my practical experience is that if you rent the place out for $300 a night and you get hit with a $50 fine for noise, you don't care so much. And it does also include an ability for township to, or for community to limit it, but only once there is, I want to get this number right. 30% of the existing residential units have become short-term rental.
Then you consider the entire community?
Yes. And from the planning side, there's, we also have concern that, you know, these, because they're not considered commercial, they would not participate in funding the local convention visitor rehorts, which would be a challenge for those to think. So right now, it's been passed by the House of Representatives, it is headed towards the Senate. If your folks who are so inclined and think this has been bad policy for the state, feel free to contact your senator. I did that earlier today myself.
What's the motivation behind it?
The, well, if you look, if you search HB4722, it has a list, a summary as reported from the committee for you to read through it. Representatives of the following entities testified in support of the bill. Michigan Realtors, Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors, Bluefish Vacation Rentals and Pineapple Vacations, and Mackinac Center for Public Policy. The following entities indicated support for the bill. Airbnb, Beach Town Vacation Rentals, Rental Property Owners Association of Michigan, Michigan Chamber of Commerce, Harper County Chamber of Commerce. Representatives of the following entities testified in opposition to the bill. Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Townships Association, City of Ferndale, City of Grandhaven, Spring Lake Township, Progressive Architecture and Engineering. The following entities indicated opposition to the bill. Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association, Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs, Grandhaven Chamber of Commerce, Spring Lake Chamber of Commerce, Ferrisburg Chamber of Commerce, City of Grand Rapids, Conference of Western Lane, City of Rogers City, Potoski, Kalamazoo, St. Joseph, Harper Woods, Vilja-Mackinac City, and City of Bridgman. It's been framed as a property rights issue, let me do what I want with the property. But as you heard from the folks favoring it, Realtors can make a lot more money selling houses for short-term rentals because there's a higher value that you can get out of it, is the short version that I can share.
Well, the resort areas, no one's going to benefit from this. I mean, that's the only one just geared towards, right?
Well, and so most of these, Grandhaven, Spring Lake, Potoski, St. Joseph, they already have short-term rental ordinances that have been in place for 10 years or more, and they're suited differently to the different communities. Some are more favorable, some aren't. And I personally frame it as also a, you know, part of the thing with zoning is you give up some of the bundles of rights to do whatever you want with your property for knowing that your neighbor can't do whatever they want with their property. And so that really hasn't been discussed as a balance, that yeah, you may want to have a house that you can rent out short-term, but you want your neighbor to do that too. And so this would kind of blow the lid off that. That's all that I've got.
All right, well, with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting, my final meeting at 6 after 8. Thank you very much, everyone.